Thank you.
All right, we can go ahead then and do a one-minute introduction. Starting now, with me on point, and thank you.
First of all, I started starting with my mom. I always end up going first. I've been in the community for 24 years. My husband and I bring a seven-seater group as a matter of fact. I am a living room, I'm a mom, I'm a wife, I'm a sister. More importantly, I'm a Gigi. We're expecting our baby here or second baby in the river. I am running for county council because I believe that now is the time to either put up or shut up. I think that, I've had several people ask me to do this in several times past, and it just didn't have a time. I feel all of these reasons, but I don't think that we're at that stage now. I think that now we're even willing to believe in the law for seeing where we're at.
Okay. And yeah, I would like to also say that I'm running because I feel like it's time to put up or shut up. My tie to the business community here, I think, started really from enjoying the business up here. So like when Uncorps had those issues, clearly left, I don't know who professionals left, that kind of really made me look at like, you know, why are these really good entrepreneurs leaving? And I really enjoyed going to those places, and I didn't want to see other businesses leaving. So that was a big motivation for me to run to see if I can change things every council. And then in 2022, I got involved. Basically Sandy introduced me to the world of entrepreneurship. I came in with a dream of being an indoor recreation facility, and right away she made a business plan for me, and she was just super enthusiastic and everything. And I'm not even gonna tell, but I just, you know, really love the business community here.
I'm David Rieger, been here since 1986. I did 38 years at the lab. That sounds like a prison term, but it was a 32-year honor for me. And it was all voluntary. And then, since then, I took a little bit of time off, and then I ran for county council, and I went on the council for four years. I'm a big advocate for small businesses, and I was the only counselor to vote for the Uncorped appeal case. And then in the end, I was one in district court. It was frankly mistreatment by the county council, by the county staff. We should have overruled that and gotten him his restaurant open. And now I don't think he'll ever open, even if he wins a settlement. They're probably never opening. And the judges ruled on that, that the county mistreatment was really severe. Arbitratory and egregious violated his civil rights. You can't take away someone's business opportunities for about a really good, well-documented reason. And that's what happened to Uncorped. And there are other things around. There are other people who talk about things, but they never bothered to sue. But that's something to talk about later in the questions.
My name is Rin. I've lived here for 27 years, raised three children here. I was a stay-at-home mom for 17 years. And then after that, I started working with the Los Alamos Commerce and Development Corporation, where I worked for 10 years, seven as the chamber director. I bring a different perspective. My experience engaging with the small business community, the entrepreneurs and the people of Los Alamos make me uniquely qualified to understand the challenges that our small businesses face. My 27 years as a Los Alamos resident make me want to improve our community and make it a better place for us all to live. I love this town, but there is room for improvement. Downtown revitalization and keeping retail and restaurants in our town matters. It's not an easy place to run a business. Fostering trust between the business owners and citizens and the county government could go a long way. Increasing housing and affordable housing. I'm sorry to say.
Just finish your sentence.
Yeah, okay. Is a big deal. And I want to just thank all of the candidates for running. It is so great to have so many people who care. Thank you to their chambers, thank you to you and them.
Thank you to the Chamber of Founders for sponsoring this candidate forum. My name is Denise Durkis. I'm running for reelection to county council because I want to continue to help plan for growth and embrace the future while preserving the past and the amenities that make the county a great place to live. I'm serving in my second year as council chair and my fourth year on council. During my term on council, I gained an understanding of council procedures and authorities and knowledge of county operations and challenges. I learned the complexities of the county budget and recognized the importance of this field responsibility. I worked strategically with fellow counselors to establish council priorities and to develop tools to track county performance. I'm conscious of my role as a public servant, and I am accountable to my constituents for my decisions. I recognize three overarching issues facing the county in the near term: housing development, downtown revitalization, and community services. I welcome community input on how to best address these priorities.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We'll start the question portion now, and they're gonna have me remind you that there'll be a 30-second warning on this one. So you have two minutes to answer this question, and it's about workforce. Housing, including affordable housing, is a significant factor in recruiting and retaining employees in our community and is consistently ranked as one of the biggest workforce-related needs of our small business community. Recently, the county council approved its new affordable housing plan. Question is, as a counselor, how would you help advocate for more affordable housing and ensure the plan is actualized? Ma'am?
Okay, no worries. So housing, the housing shortage just isn't my problem. Okay. Housing shortage just isn't indicative here of Los Alamos. It's accurate information, right? But true down here, housing has always been an issue. From my initial move here years ago, that if you want me to pay what I can, I'm just a little shell shocked with that number. And then you live here on the reason to get to understand the culture. We have a couple of issues. We have land issues, we just don't have enough. And then we have people who like myself, who are very close to each other, who have no desires to leave. And then you have young people who are coming in as a result of the new project that we're bringing online. So we have several contributing factors. It would be my intent to work with those first-time home buyers because that's probably gonna be one of the biggest investments you're going to make. And once you can do that, then you can look at how to pivot and create other forms of wealth. Because unfortunately, Los Alamos is tagged with that everyone who here is rich, and that's not true. We need housing for teachers, for fire department, we hold for the purpose of the city. We need that, when I say affordable housing, I mean affordable, not like $20,000. That's not affordable. So my, my, an interesting question for the first-time small, first-time home buyers.
You have 30 seconds.
I got 30. Okay, first-time home buyers. That's important.
Go ahead.
All right. So this is probably the problem that I have thought about the most. And I just like keep bouncing around on what I think the priorities here are here. I try to organize them by priority on this question by sort of feasibility. So the first thing I think would be like building through the task force. And I think this would resonate with business owners as well, right? I wonder if my contributions to your building. You know, having builders, business owners, residents, staff members, you know, really working together to, you know, review code for clarity. Actually defining affordable, like when you say what's affordable housing, right? Like, are we saying, say, like, the average minimum wage is $20 an hour? So that means they can afford $1,000 a month? And that gives you a target to hit, right? If you're going by like the 1% rule, one wrench or whatever, you can't build housing, you're gonna be $200,000 or whatever. And so when we're talking about building affordable housing that costs $400,000, that doesn't really be our affordable housing goal. So, and then also identifying pain points and care, things that people can sit on, how they will be good. So starting there with engagement with everyone, getting everyone's experiences. Next is consolidated, concurrent, expedited, and simplified review processes. So like making the planning, zoning, the fire, public works, utilities, whatever, environment impact, site planning, doing all that at once, right? Like, I don't know why we can't just have a, you know, one sheet that tells us, tells what you're gonna do, and everybody looks at it and approves it or not, right? Gets it going. So all the sort of the regulatory and code stuff, making that faster, easier, less expensive. Staff training, I hear constantly complaints that, you know, one inspector will say this thing, and then code inspector will say the opposite. So making sure everyone's on the same page and everyone understands the code. And then, and then we have all the like typical housing policy of any sort, like upzoning.
I'm gonna have to stop in there, Dave, I'm sorry.
I had 20 things to go through.
I'm sorry. We'll let you get to them at a later time today. Go ahead, Mr. Rieger.
I'm gonna do. Well, I'm a big supporter of Los Alamos Affordable Housing Plan, but that's really getting us about 1,000 units that are in the process. We also have to develop as much as we can on a northbound. That is only limited to that. The lab has brought thousands and thousands of people to the region. So there are about 6,000 people probably that need housing. With families, that's maybe 20,000 persons. And that is a lot less than what we have. And a lot of what they need is not affordable housing because there are so many other people that are lab employees that need housing. So they, what the lab is not doing is their obligation. You take all these people, put them out in the middle of nowhere, you don't give them enough resources and enough infrastructure to go with it. We need more land, and there's no way around it to resolve a vast number of people, more families, and more homes. And, and their living is so far away that they're just commuting all over the place. And it's causing fatalities on our roads, and it's causing lots of other problems. What I would really like to advocate for is in addition to some land is that we need better access to the big housing markets in Albuquerque, which is a highway that goes straight down the Rio Grande, down to Albuquerque, not circling all over northern Mexico to get there. Just go straight down. And, you know, I think it's an obligation of the NNSA that are gonna put this place out in the middle of nowhere and then keep hiring thousands of people because they're not just what they've done, they're what they're gonna do in the future. They're still planning on hiring thousands more. So we need to have a route that gets those people to easy sets of housing in a convenient time. Is that the end or 30 seconds?
30 seconds.
Okay. So we need a route to get people south to the big markets there that can ease all of our demand, right? That a lot of people, it's got so bad, people are living in Rio Rancho and driving. And then they're learning for it yet because it's a large part of their day, and it's a big deal to save 20 minutes, and then you get all kinds of other problems. So for the security of the town and for the safety of all of us, I think we need to improve our transportation to the south, which could include either highway or rail, either one. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Rieger. Ms. Herman?
Thank you. The Affordable Housing Plan is an excellent inventory of resources and a study of problems, but there's a lot to do. I think a path to the south like that, or these land transfers, that's great. Let's think about that. That takes a lot of time and a lot of work. I think for right now, we need to focus on what we have here, and that's, I think we need to focus on housing density downtown. A few things stand out to me. Collaboration with the stakeholders and developers. Clearly, we need to be partnered locally with landfill and the schools. Advocacy for funding. This housing plan was something that we had to get done. It was required so that we can access state and federal programmatic policy and development funding. Now that it's approved, we can pursue these funds and some of these other opportunities. We need a dedicated housing trust fund that can be used for finance affordable housing initiatives, and these funds can be used for various purposes. Let's see. Streamlining regulations and processes, I think everybody says it. We need to simplify and have consistent processes to make this work. Thank you. Community engagement. You know, I, I think that is of the utmost importance, that we need to always gather feedback and give updates often. I think we need to promote inclusionary zoning, and I don't think we should just encourage mixed use and mixed income projects. I think we should require it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Herman. Ms. Durkis?
Housing, especially low and moderate-income housing, has been my number-one priority on council. Council approved a revised development code in December 2022 that raised building heights to 86 feet in Los Alamos and 54 feet in White Rock. It reduced parking requirements, allowed accessory dwelling units, and expanded mixed-use development. These changes will help facilitate higher-density housing and reduce housing construction costs. Council also approved the revised Affordable Housing Plan in August 2024. That increased eligibility from 8% to 120% of area median income to include workforce housing. These changes will enable the county to cooperate with the Los Alamos Public Schools to co-develop property at the middle school site, primarily for workforce housing. Income-qualified housing realistically can only be built on publicly-owned land. Privately-owned properties are far too expensive. The Canyon Walk apartments with 70 units and the Bluff Senior Apartments with 55 units on DP Road are two such projects recently built on county-owned land. An additional 40 affordable housing is planned for Track A8A along the southern bridge of DP Road. Increasing the overall number of available housing units in the county should help bring down the high costs of housing, simply to block supply and demand. The biggest hurdle in development appears to be the ability of developers to obtain funding. And as the Federal Reserve lowers interest rates, funding should become more accessible. Our remote mountain location and the limited availability of craft workers also contributes to delays in construction. As a counselor, progress on housing development has been frustratingly slow, but the county is making progress. I will continue to support future opportunities for housing development, particularly for low and moderate-income housing for the workforce.
Thank you, Councilwoman Durkis. All right. And I apologize, I did not.
It's okay, no one is wrong.
Okay. All right, so we're gonna start this time. I was having this one start always. So we're gonna, the next set, few sets of questions, we're just gonna start, you know, like Mr. Running King will start the next one, Councilwoman Rieger, and so on. So you're not always on the hot seat at the very beginning. This is my first time on the air, so. Okay. So the next set of questions are multi-part questions. So we're gonna have three minutes. You're gonna go first, Mr. Running King. Okay. So these are, this is a two-part question. And so you'll have three minutes also with the 30-second warning. Okay? All right. So this is on business recruitment and retention. A perception continues to suggest that Los Alamos County is not entirely business-friendly. The two, the two-part question is, one, what do you feel is leading to that perception? And the second part is, what three steps would you take towards improving the condition upon which a business can start and thrive in our community? Go ahead, sir.
All right. Well, I guess there's sort of like three big ones I hear a lot is the rents, the labor market, and the inconsistent codes. Those would be the big two. But so, so as far as fixing things, you know, we have rents for both businesses, and then there's labor, the housing, those are kind of tied together. That is a big challenge. We kind of talked about how to do affordable housing. I'll get back to that, but while I have some time. So yeah, so I want to reinforce again, regulatory environment, the inconsistency, the lack of clarity in codes, and problems that are unnecessary in there. The inadequate staff training, so addressing those, right? Making sure staff is giving clear instructions on code. Like, I think every business owner would like to know exactly what they have to do to get their business up and off the ground and get their building to code and know how to follow the rules, it's just they don't know. So again, business task force, identifying the pain points, clarifying code, getting rid of codes that are really on me, expediting permitting, reducing fees. I'd like to see something like a introductory tax rebate or something so startups can sort of get off the ground and reduce their costs a little bit. And then the infrastructure problem. So improving transportation, getting some sort of, you know, commuting going on, trying to get rid of like the creepy lab traffic, being able to get backward between White Rock, the kids would love to be able to go down to White Rock, but there's not a good way for them to do that right now because of the bus system. Internet sucks up here, so, you know, getting better internet going on. A housing problem, if we want more affordable labor, we gotta have more housing. We're sure having much storage, right? So if people could buy in bulk, you know, have the cheaper supply chains, things like that. Yeah, do I still have time? Oh, awesome. I'm gonna go back to my 21-point plan. So pre-approved designs on housing, if you could just have like a, like a few different, like, hangars, modern rooms, that kind of thing, that like the county was like, we looked at the plan for this, it's pre-approved, you could just go buy it, lock it down in property, you could go. Same with like materials, I would love to see something, is that my time or do I get this?
You got 30 seconds.
Like, if you gotta come out like insulated concrete forms, it's like efficient building material. So like, like more materials, just like pre-approving them, having to make common site and check this. And I think this could be helpful for businesses too, right? Just new, like, the typical things that people struggle with, just have a checklist to get through it. More online permitting processes, doing virtual inspection. There's all these things you could do with technology. Ah, okay, that's my time. I, I'll, I'll get back to there.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Rieger?
Oh, thank you. Well, I don't think it's really a perception that it's not business-friendly. It is, courts have ruled that way. And the permitting and very aggressive enforcement environment is very hard for small businesses. Many of you look like an unworked case in writing in the paper, then if you're a person thinking about starting a business, that's gotta sober you up, maybe, maybe about doing something else. When I look at one of my friends who had a French restaurant before they leave, I think he gave up on Los Alamos, and he's, that place is booby, it's sad, just booby. Yes, lines out the door. So there's more to it than, than perception. Those are really substantive things. The very aggressive permitting is one of the things, is we don't have enough inspectors in the town. So a lot of inspections get called in from the state. So they may visit once a week, and you have a construction project. It's very important to get timely, timely inspections. And so that is always one. So the three steps, well, one of them is we need to have a walkable, business-friendly downtown, and that has to be built into the projects that the county approves. And you have that coming up right now. Downtown redevelopment areas, there have to be storefront on-the-ground areas that are perfect for businesses. In general, comparative housing, compared at low rents, we will get, make less money. But the county has to have a financial way to fill the gap so that we can maintain a business-friendly environment. And when I say retail, I mean restaurants also, so that the ground floor can be a very healthy place that people walk by it. And then upstairs, you can have housing, you know, offices, you can have whatever. But you don't want the ground floor on your streets being business fronts that are locked doors with a landfill boundary, or that's all you see. That is as unfriendly as you can get. It's great to have those people, just put them upstairs somewhere, and then the ground floor is a restaurant or something. And then, I don't know if I have three steps I would take towards including here, but the walkable down areas with the county funding to make sure that that's enforced. See, developers can do whatever they want with private property, but if you have county character that makes them incorporate that retail-friendly area into the project, then it can work. But if you have, just let them do whatever they want, well, it'll be a lab office. If that's not a lab office, it might be a big apartment building. It will not be anything else. Am I done?
You have 20 seconds.
20 seconds, good guy. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilman. Ms. Herman?
Thank you. So I agree that perception that the county is not exactly business-friendly may stem from several factors, including bureaucratic hurdles, a lack of clear communication regarding regulations and support services, and then a whole lot of vacant businesses. So I have three steps that I think would help. Number one, going back to streamlining permitting and regulatory processes. And there is online permitting now, which I think has helped. But I think we need to work to simplify and expedite the process for new businesses. We need a one-stop shop for business license permits, reducing red tape, and providing clear guidelines to help these entrepreneurs navigate the regulatory landscape more easily. Enhance business support services. The Small Business Liaison, who recently left, was handling some of this. I hope that the county does fill that position again and gives that person more authority to, to help these people. The SBDC, the Chamber Main Street, and LIC DC fill a lot of this role in our community, providing resources such as business planning assistance, access to funding opportunities, and the Business Accelerator Program. Jacqueline and I ran that program for the last three years, and it has brought a lot of successful small businesses into our community. Perhaps the county might want to consider engaging more with that and maybe providing some funding for it. I'm not sure how it would help, how they could do that, but it's a successful program for our community. And then foster communication, better communication and engagement with the business community. Actively listen to business owners and incorporate their feedback into policy decisions. Continuing to have a position like the Small Business Liaison would create a more supportive business environment and would address their specific needs. Encourage staff to engage with the business community. Attend chamber events like this. Engage more on social media. This is where a lot of people get their news about our businesses. I would like to see the county respond when people have questions or concerns.
You have 20 seconds.
I'm good.
Thank you, Ms. Herman. Councilwoman Durkis?
Misunderstanding and misinformation circulated by word of mouth and on social media are the biggest contributors to the perception of Los Alamos not being business-friendly. Some misinformation came just now from Counselor Rieger, but I don't have time to address that here. Under New Mexico law, and I quote, "Counties are granted the powers necessary and proper to provide for the safety, preserve the health, promote the prosperity, and improve the morals, order, comfort, and convenience of any county or its inhabitants." Note that "provide for the safety" and "preserve the health" are listed first. Building codes and permitting processes that are perceived as cumbersome and over-restrictive exist to protect public health and safety and to ensure compliance with universally accepted building, plumbing, electrical, mechanical, and fire codes. "Promote the prosperity" is listed next. Many people ask why the county doesn't do more to financially assist small businesses. The simple is that there are legal constraints on what the county can do. One constraint is the New Mexico anti-donation clause, which I quote, "The state, county, school districts, and municipalities cannot donate directly or indirectly to or aid any person, association, or public or private corporation." And even the New Mexico Local Economic Development Act, or LITA, requires a demonstration of significant community impact and support and evidence of job creation and increased wages, proof of financial soundness, funding sources and uses, and project capital investment. and project capital investment, and work. In all instances, the county must comply with state law. It's limited legally in what it can do to assist small businesses. We would all like to do more if we could, but there are legal constraints that we cannot ignore. As to what three steps? One, I think the county should encourage mixed-use development, enabled by the revised Development Code with ground-level office space that's flexible to accommodate the needs of different types of small businesses. And I'm out of time, oh, thirty seconds, okay. The county recently updated its self-service portal for permits and licenses, these are already online. The county should continue to look for opportunities to further streamline its processes and work with state inspection officials to expedite inspections. And county should continue to support the Small Business Liaison position, which was approved by council, to assist businesses with licensing and permitting processes, and connect them with sources in the business and community development opportunities.
All right, I think you have time to stop you there. Thank you. I'm letting her do it, but that's the nice part of her, yeah. All right, Ms. Mills, that's yours.
Thank you. Okay, so, the question was, what do you feel is leading to the reception? So there are two factors that can be played. There are the complex regulatory, it's complex regulatory environment, again, limited commercial space, the high cost, lack of communications and support, and funded lack of third-party communication, local programs about the resources built on. So I say this as a small business person from the time I moved here. I moved here right after the fire, and I'm not sure how many of you remember our books. Many of you remember them.
Oh, I remember.
Do you remember Smoothville Juice Gallery? That was me. That was there, that was the first juice bar, and then Lando opened a berry juice bar. But I have been a small business person from the time I moved here, so I can tell you that I've seen the evolution of the process. I remember when you literally like drop off an application in the morning and come up in the afternoon. And now I sit in, and I call the lady, and I'm like, are we anywhere near ready with my family now? Because nothing's changed. So, I understand, and then from that inserted on a pain in the zone condition, I understand that they're gonna have to bring handshakes, and then at the same time, there's that part of me saying, we can do better. So I'm gonna tell you right now, there's something that comes here from me a lot, it's just those simple words. Whatever it is we're doing, I don't give a wing, but we can do better. We can look at how other people are doing things, and we are smart enough to figure out how to do it better. So, that's regarding the perception. And then regarding what three steps would you take towards improving the conditions? Streamlining the permitting and licensing process, we need to continue to promote the business culture. See, I think that was a brilliant idea. Again, you're taking something and you're improving on that. Expanding a quarter of the commercial spaces, that's already been done, but not quite implemented, so as Denise alluded to earlier, encourage mixed-use development. Leverage public and private partnerships. Number three could be enhance business support and engagement, improve outreach and resources. Again, I remember when I started, I was fortunate enough to be able to walk into the county town, I mean, to the meeting building, and like, just talk to people because they were there. And we've grown up a little bit more, so you want handshakes to make, but I also think that you guys know how to, when you find that one person who knows the answers, you can go and go to somebody else, and they know the answer. We need to have one people like that.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, this next question is another two-part question, so you'll have three minutes, again, with a thirty-second warning. All right, the Los Alamos Chamber of Commerce and Main Street Program have spearheaded the Los Alamos Business Accelerator Program for three years, resulting in multiple new businesses being formed in Los Alamos. The first part of the question is, what barriers do you identify in our community to both recruiting new businesses, as well as retaining and supporting our current small businesses? And the second part of the question is, how would you address these challenges as counselor and leverage LACDC and the Chamber to assist in economic development? And we'll start with Councilman Rager.
Uh, thank you. Well, the, um, there's been a great program with this Business Accelerator, it's been run through Main Street and the Chamber of Congress, and it has, she's the boss. She was the boss, and it has been a huge success in getting businesses started. And they have, they're all really small spaces, but they're all going. And I, I, I'm a customer of all those businesses all the time. The next step in every business development is usually belong to, if they're looking at their future, their long-term future, they want to buy a space in their business. It is very difficult if you're renting space forever, because you're coming to these problems where you need to rebuild. And every dime you put in is just to improve the property of the landlord. So then you're going, and then there's other ones where you need to get money in order to expand or something, and you need to own something to use as collateral to get an expansion, and even in our LITA program, you need something to use for security in our programs. So they, if you don't own the building and make it part of the business, you kind of get a little box, where you're just sitting there and tell the people that own the, figure out you're successful, and they crank up the rent. Because any small business that starts to take off, it's a natural link for someone to say, well, you should charge them a rent now. So they need to have a transitioning, and I think the way that is done is through county center programs, through the LITA program, where they have a chance to move into a space as part of an understanding that the landlords, the people that are being funded under our LITA and MRA fundings, they have to provide opportunities for people to move into a successful space. What we're seeing right now in our town is one area, the, the space on, where Lisa Shid is, and I forgot the number, that's five hundred trillion, eight hundred trillion? Yeah. That is one of the few places where you can actually own it, it is economy. Almost all of the town, you're in a rental situation, well, that is eventually a dead end. I remember one of my favorite businesses being Allied Boots, Great Deli in town, what happened to it? Landlords figured out it was a huge success, and they started raising the rent, and then those guys just walked out. You know, know them, they just said, that's enough. And they, they were, you know, old enough to retire, just quit the business, folded up, left town. Those are the kind of things that happen to you when you don't own your space. You have to grow into something in the future. And you need to have the opportunity to, to take loans against something intention. So as, the next part is, well, we are already leveraging the LACDC, this is, this is a great program, and it's moving ahead very fast, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Ms. Herman?
Thank you. So, what barriers? Commercial space, workforce challenges, regulatory complexity. How would I address those? Encouraged about one of new and renovation of existing commercial space. I, I really feel like we are about to see something start to happen, start to open up, but it just can't come fast enough. And that darn Business Accelerator just keeps cranking out entrepreneurs who are ready to build spaces, you know? I think the county should encourage public-private partnerships for commercial development, encourage mixed-use development. And I think the MRA's are going to make a difference, you know, the MRA. Workforce development initiatives. I would collaborate with educational institutions and workforce development organizations to create training programs that align with the needs of our local businesses. That can include internships, apprenticeships, and still-building workshops to ensure that our workforce is equipped to meet the demands of our employers. When the big new daycare opened, they really struggled with staffing. UNMLA opened a, uh, early education program to help them. They're still struggling, but it has made a difference. If any of you know someone that would like to work there, call. The Chamber organizes a great job pair twice a year, and of course, affordable housing will always help to retain the workforce. Stringline regulatory processes, again, I would advocate for a review of existing regulations to identify areas where these processes can be simplified or expedited. Denise is right, there's a reason these laws and codes and everything are in place, it's for our safety, but if we can make this a better experience and help the small business community, it would go a long way. One of the businesses that we helped in the Business Accelerator actually told us that dealing with our county was an absolute joy compared to dealing with Santa Fe. But, you know, these guys have a lot of experience, I think they'll think, and that makes a difference, so. There, keep going, okay, so, keep the Small Business Liaison position so that there is someone who's dedicated on staff to helping these new and existing businesses really hold their hand through the process, it, it helps.
Thank you, Ms. Herman. Councilwoman Durkis?
So, the Los Alamos Business Accelerator is an excellent program that provides entrepreneurs an opportunity to receive guidance from experienced business owners, develop their business model, and to test drive their businesses. Some areas to recruiting and retaining new businesses include limited availability of workforce qualified to perform the worker services provided by the businesses, limited marketing support within the business community, competition from online shopping entities, limited availability of suitable, affordable, commercial space that meets the needs and budget of the businesses, challenges negotiating licenses and permitting processes. So, what I address these, so I, I will preface this by saying, I struggled with this section because typically, county and the council seek these suggestions from the Chamber. You are the experts, so, and then we decide or determine whether we can, we have the authority to fund them and, and the funds to, you know, to support them. So, here's what I came up with. Workforce training and development that addresses the specific needs of the various businesses, a marketing platform and services that support the entire business community, programs such as Shoplow and Small Business Saturday to compete with online businesses. And workforce issues can also be addressed by more affordable housing, as previously discussed, expanded public transportation services. And to address the limited availability of suitable and affordable commercial space, the county should encourage mixed-use development enabled by the new Development Code with ground-level flexible office space. And to address the challenges of negotiating licenses and permitting process, the county, county will continue to, the liaison position, and it should also look for opportunities to further streamline its processes, continue, and assist with licensing and permitting processes that connect them to other resources. And, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Ms. Mills?
Thank you. So, we are looking at what barriers can be identified. Four comes to mind, is high-cost commercial space, limited availability, regulatory challenges, workforce availability and retention, and then insufficient marketing and support for existing businesses. It's, as I hear some of these questions, it sounds like they live, this is my time of being here, because I, I remembered all of these things, I remembered going to LA and being here and asking for a loan, we had been asking for collateral, and every business we've ever funded here has been funded by either my husband or me, or my husband and me. But it's, it's, and, and the data also supports that most small businesses tend to use their own savings fairly to start businesses. So when I, when I think about ready for bidding challenges, again, it gets back to the dropping the app off in the morning, picking up the young union, the committing, I'm sorry, the workforce availability, this is a funny story. So, when I was Smoothville Juice Gallery, I remember interviewing all people, and I remember this one guy saying to me, I just can't get up in the morning. And he said, my mom said four loans. And I said, I don't remember any of them, no, I remember every one of you. And you need four loans, and you need to set four loans, and I had my mom's job, who's a grown adult, and I was working at that. So I would come in the morning, need the truck, prep things, get it ready, go to Lando, stay there all day, ask my, pick up my children, come back, went along, want to go back and close it down. So, when you're telling you can't get up in the morning and pour coffee when I already made it for you, I can't, it's kind of a business plan, it's, it's just not possible, because you kind of expect the thought, so, that's how I said it, so. Yeah, that's a real thing, I didn't factor that in, but then how do you address these challenges? Expand affordable commercial spaces, explore zoning and land use adjustments, streamline regulatory processes, and provide guidance, because that's a true thing. It's like when people say you, you go through this thing, but they don't really give you, they don't really give you specific guidelines, you just keep bringing lots, because you're not the right rock, so you really do need that guidance. And again, LACDC and Chamber Partnership, and then enhance workforce development and housing.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Rager, am I pronouncing your last name right?
Yep, you got it.
Yeah, okay, go ahead, sir.
All right, so first of all, even if the county was perfect, we still have a limited market here, right? Like, we're sort of a community of shut-ins and introverts to the furniture of who comes to live here, so that makes it very difficult just to get some people coming in the door. Again, yeah, the regulatory environment, inconsistent, unclear, probably overreaching in some aspects. The infrastructure is a challenge, you know, the transportation, the road, you know, like, we have people talking about the road diet, and that's going to affect their business. And I talked about the infrastructure earlier, right, with internet issues, the housing, all that kind of stuff. High rents, obviously, which again goes to the lack of commercial space. Yeah, higher utility costs, taxes, like, man, I risk I could be talking about TRT, but that's a statement. But if I'm on council, I will try to advocate for more, for more news. Lab competing for labor, right, that's also a big one. And, and labs and counties. If you're a restaurant, and you live forty-five minutes away from food capital to Southwest, that kind of makes it hard too, right? The people here have no problem going down to Santa Fe. Advertising is a challenge that I hear is a common theme among small businesses here, how do you get the word out? There's like a billion different social media platforms, you know, LACDC has like calendar, you know, there's, there's all these different calendar events, and it's like, which one do you go to? So I hear that it's like, the bankier buff on advertising here is like very diluted. So, talking about solutions, promoting local shopping, thank you, LACDC for the Chamber Fest, we got Trick or Treat on Main Street coming up, all those events, we just like, keep doing what you're doing and just do more of it. Like, more networking opportunities and like entrepreneur mentorship stuff, I did the Business Accelerator, and it like, learned a ton through that, it just, you know, is, is unfeasible for me to do an interview at a region space here, right? The, the cost of rent, there's no way I'm making up the, to pay for that, so, so, you know, and there's other businesses I'd like to do. Thirty seconds? All right, awesome. Let's see, referral programs, right, like where businesses can sort of refer each other, that can probably help with the advertising thing. I know we do some of that. Yeah, just, just trying to, to, to think more out of the box on. Yeah, just trying to think more out of the box on, you know, helping businesses and helping businesses because it's a rough yard that I'm here. You know, investing in the infrastructure. This is a multi-passive thing. So at least a platform of mixed-use, live-work environments, that helps. Helping like expand finance and pipelines, things like that. Yeah, that's good. All right.
Thank you. Okay, the next question and surrounding text is a little long, so bear with me. This is on commercial development. Los Alamos County is at a critical turning point in terms of commercial and residential development. There have been some recent property demolitions and major housing projects, some of which have stalled, with properties sitting vacant for an extended period of time. Our local Main Street program, in conjunction with the county, is also pursuing a metropolitan redevelopment area, also known as an MRA, for the Merrimack Center and some surrounding properties. And council has, for the first time recently, set aside an MRA fund for use in both Los Alamos and White Rock, and is in the midst of defining an MRA board and guidelines for reviewing possible MRA projects that have a public good component. Okay, here's the question. And you will have two minutes for this with a 30-second warning. What do you view as the biggest barrier for successful development in our county? And what industry or industries would you help advocate to grow and expand in Los Alamos County to help diversify our economy and blind? And I think we're with Ms. Herman starting this question. Thank you, ma'am.
So both the pandemic and national economic conditions have slowed development in Los Alamos and everywhere. But things like interest rates improving and the MRA coming online should help. I really hope to see development moving along in town. Right now, I see one of our barriers to successful development to be regulatory complexities. A builder once told us that if he was doing a project in Los Alamos, he would add on six months to the project compared to other places. Part of that is getting workers up here. Part of that is that we are remote, and that adds to their costs. But part of it is dealing with the county. I honestly can't imagine that this is true, but apparently this is the reputation that we have in some circles. We have the same regulations and building codes as everyone else, but our reputation is impacting us. The other barrier is, of course, land, lack of space. We have to do the best with what we have right now. To address these, I would advocate for the following industries to grow and expand. Technology with the lab here, we have a fabulous, you know, potential to expand the technology sector. The Feynman Center exists, just been off Leno Technologies as startup businesses. The only problem is having space for them to open and grow. If we could develop some light lab space down on TP Road or in Trotta, that would help. These are high-wage jobs. Tourism and hospitality, movies. I don't know if you've noticed, that's worked. You know, this is, this is a great way to draw people in. Renewable energy and sustainability. As the world kind of shifts towards sustainable practices, we could position ourselves to be a leader. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Durkin?
So a metropolitan redevelopment area is established by the New Mexico statute and powers municipalities with authorities to revitalize and redevelop areas that are deteriorating, blighted, or underutilized to stimulate economic development and community well-being. The designation of an MRA provides the county with more options for redevelopment in the downtown areas of both Los Alamos and White Rock. It enables tools such as public-private partnerships, development incentives, and tax abatements that are otherwise unallowable under state law, the anti-donation laws, to help facilitate mixed-use development within the areas. The MRA plan will establish an MRA board, likely composed of counselors, to review proposed projects, gather broad public input, and determine with full transparency whether projects should be approved. Note that only elected officials on council, not advisory or oversight boards, have the authority to improve, you know, taxpayer dollars. So regarding the specific questions, the limited availability of building land is an ongoing challenge for the county. Just by the way, as chair, I have been to DC four times to meet with the NNSA administrator to request land transfers. And the response has always been if they don't have any land available now. So as, and as previously stated, the immediate challenge for development appears to be the ability of developers to obtain funding. A remote location contributes to the cost of development. The limited availability of craft workers contributes to delays in development and construction. And, and cost. So to help diversify the county economy, spin-off businesses using laboratory technologies seems to be a good fit. And this has been talked about for a long time, but little seems to have been done.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Milton?
So the biggest barriers for successful development, there are a few of them. Limited availability of land. The county is, is too much of a strong, it's strange. Could be much of this number of areas designated for national forests or DOD property. Regulatory hurdles and right here approval processes, uncertain funding and incentives for development. While recently, I'm sorry, I'm not so bad. While the recent creation of an MRA fund is a step in the right direction, the lack of clear and consistent funding or incentives for redevelopment in key areas, especially for housing and mixed-use development, remains a barrier. Technology and innovation, innovative industries. And again, this needs to move beyond landfill. And the reason why is because landfill already has a strong foundation in scientific research and information. Thanks to well, the, and building on this, we can actually attract other tech technologies. Now, advocate for policies that incentivize tech companies, satellite offices, or research centers in Los Alamos. Tourism, I think everybody loves having the Argentinean folks here. I can speak personally that they work really well with me as far as ways within my small business as well. And then why the Los Alamos has an untapped opportunity to expand ecotourism, outdoor recreation, and most cultural tourism, leveraging a view of the landscape of the historical significance of the area. And finally, remote work, friendly services, and co-working hours.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Reniki?
All right. So this is kind of an interesting question. The parts about the MRA and the, the questions. It seemed like they jumped, they changed direction. But anyways, so I'll just talk real quick on the MRA. So I really like the idea of MRAs. And, you know, I just feel like leaving Los Alamos County to take a good idea and, you know, twist it into this thing that kind of sucks for the community. You know, I guess the big thing is the lack of community engagement. Like the inconsistent planning and all these things. So the MRA would be great to bring small businesses. And it feels like the MRA is being used to help one single giant business that isn't even a local business. And it's like to help the county with this agenda for an event center. I don't know why the county wants an event center so bad. We tried this with Marriott and 20th Street. They could have auctioned off the 20th Street land to people, right? Like, at NDA, one of the properties. They were going to do this awesome live workspace. The county, they didn't seem to want to work with them. They just wanted to sell the whole thing off. It's a big project, like you don't have $50 million. The county didn't want to work with them. So how is that a small business around the county? So, so yeah, community engagement, making sure these projects reflect the community well, like is what you're saying. That's one of the barriers. Talk about regulatory environments. Like, it would be nice if we had more online engagement, always on engagement. You know, you have to show these meetings, and a lot of people just don't have time to visit your meetings. So having some sort of, you know, always-on type feedback forms and engagement, and be more transparent about the decision-making processes. This is, this is a problem with the leader, right? We've had local businesses frustrated with the leader because it just doesn't work for them. All right, let me get on to industries because I really like this question.
That was the final warning, actually.
Uh, final warning?
Do you read that? He says early tech, outdoor recreation, terms of healthcare.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Well, I think the biggest barrier of success is in fact that, I mean, the county government's been beaten. They're just simply not getting their job done. You look at White Rock, it's been 20 years it's been wrecked. And all we've seen maybe are a bunch of other restaurants going under during the COVID time. And there's only one brave lady that opened a studio down there. And the rest of the place, it looks pretty bad. The county hasn't done nothing in revitalizing that entire area. Despite the fact the MRA's been around for a while, but we've had other capabilities for many years. Then you look at the Hilltop House and all it's accomplished in a decade. In a decade, it's just demolishing the building, but still nothing moves happening. And then you look at Merrimack, and it's various things are being said. And there's a, the lab has moved in to rent a big space in there. That is not really our goal for long term. And again, the county hasn't accomplished anything. So I think the real problem is that we've had county councils that rubber stamp things that I do not find to be sufficiently high-quality work from the county staff. And people either have to improve or they have to go. And it is getting to the point where everything in the county stands. Nothing gets to me bad, nothing gets redone. And as long as you have councils that just rubber stamp that, then we have, you have a very difficult environment for everyone that's trying to start a small business and everyone that's trying to thrive in that commercial space. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Ms. Herman? Did we start? Sorry, did I do it too? Okay.
All right. Do it again now, if you want.
All right, I think we're on our last question. So we'll have two minutes again with a 30 second. And this one's super short. How do you plan to involve the small business community in decision-making processes in our community? And now we're starting with Councilwoman Durkin.
So I've been on council for four years and, and chair for two years. I meet weekly with the county manager and vouch for the county attorney. And I have positive working relationships with county department heads. The role of council is to set policy, establish goals and priorities, and to approve the budget. The role of county staff is to implement council's priorities and to run the day-to-day operations of the county within budget priorities and in accordance with state laws. The county manager and the senior management team translate council priorities into management action plans. And performance against these plans is now tracked online on the county website in an operational excellence dashboard. So the second part of how to involve the business community in decision-making processes. So I'd start by saying communication and transparency are essential for building and sustaining trust in county government. Counselors and staff should continue to conduct surveys, hold forums, and town halls, and fully engage the business community in the decision-making process. The county should have a dedicated web forum for MRA activities and should issue press releases, maintain an active presence on social media to keep businesses aware of MRA activities and issues. And importantly, counselors and staff should be readily available to meet with and engage individual businesses on specific issues. The goal should be to keep the business community fully informed and engaged in all aspects of the MRA process for the redevelopment of our downtown areas in Los Alamos and White Rock.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Ms. Milton?
So there are five points I'd like to bring up. One, we do establish regular dialogue through a small business advisory group. Two, be increased engagement with public forums and workshops. Three, partner with the Chamber of Commerce and the LACDC with data-driven advocacy. Four, be a prioritized transparency and communication on policy impacts. Five, be to encourage participation in long-term strategic planning. I'd like to take a proactive and structured approach to involving small businesses in decision-making processes. By establishing the advisory groups, hosting public forums, partnering with key organizations, and improving communication, including small businesses and long-term planning, I aim to create a business-friendly environment and small enterprises have a clear voice and a role for shaping Los Alamos as county's future. This collaborative model would help create policies that support economic growth and ensure small businesses feel valued and empowered throughout the year.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Reniki?
Yeah, I don't have much to add to that. Small business advisory board, I think that would be great. Public process training for local entrepreneurs so they know how to be involved with the county. Improving our feedback systems, so like our surveys, how, how are we going to do that? Having a clear path of communication for businesses to ask questions and then having those answers like published somewhere so that other businesses that come along aren't just asking the same question and then giving the same answers. Or maybe there's questions that they didn't realize that needed to ask. And, and leveraging technology more. So we're starting to get into social media. You know, it's the website, the county website was, you know, all the news was centralized there. They did things by search and optimization. So like, when somebody comes to Los Alamos and they want to, you know, know how to start business, they Google that, and it comes up with all the county resources. Sometimes it's very hard to find that stuff. I've gotten used to it over the last few years, looking at it every day. But you and I still have a hard time finding information on there. An idea would be like a video, a weekly business showcase. Like maybe the county and the business talk about, you know, getting through some problem that's, that they had to get through, right? And I'll throw it up on YouTube. And that way, you know, other businesses face the same problem and see the lessons learned. Forums, I feel like people in this community really get onto all Facebook groups and things like that. So if there was more sort of a chat type forum, that might help get more engagement. All right, I'll defer my time because I've run over that.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Durkin?
So the, what we've done for many years since we began is these MRAs and these deals are just sitting with the county. We've seen a complete decline of White Rock. We've seen a complete decline of the downtown areas. The county staff have to understand that it is their job to move ahead. Right now, I mean, that has just not happened. And that is a council priority. And they have to understand that there's going to be out of this. And what we have now is this political party that happens to be running things for a long time, they do not challenge the county staff to do a better job. And they have no pressure on them to get out of the situation that they're in. So we sit with the same community, the same level of development, year after year, and never break out there. And everybody just happy with the status quo on the council. And that is just not going to be acceptable to anybody in the community. The way you involve the small business community is that you have to have these MRA boards. And they have to be a completely public operation, and they have to have citizens in the board, not just counselors. And they have to expose everything that they want to do. Because the key to redevelopment is using public funds in cooperation with the developer to make sure they reserve part of that land for an effective, small-business, walkable, friendly, multi-use environment. And if they do not do that, then they don't get any public money. People with private property can develop it how they want. They want to do other things, we can't interview them. But they do not get public money if they're just going to not get public money if they're just going to rent the ground floor to the lab. They only get public money if they're doing something that the rest of the community, the citizens, can use. Then they have access to all that money. Such a giveaway will never go away well with the public unless you have a full board and complete transparency. Otherwise, it just looks like a giveaway to somebody's favorite business friend. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Ms. Herman, we'll let you finish, finish your thoughts today.
Thank you. In my role as chamber director, I've worked closely with a lot of the county staff, coming together to help on many council priority deliverables. In that role, I attended many council meetings and know well how the staff implements the council's priorities. I have also met the staff recently to discuss their current challenges. How do I plan to involve the small business community? Believe it or not, I plan to engage with the Chamber of Commerce. They have established networks and help facilitate communication between the business community and the county. I would actively involve small business owners in economic development planning and decision-making efforts. Their insights should help shape strategies that promote growth and sustainability within our local economy. The county needs to clearly communicate about topics like LEDA, criteria, and the MRA process. We're going to get a lot of proposals in the MRA district, and I think we should have everyone that is interested be included in the decisions, or in the discussions. Council is committed to getting broad public input on this. Transparency and trust are more important now than ever for the county, and I have faith that the MRAs will make a difference in our redevelopment if we all work together. I aim to create a more inclusive decision-making process that empowers the small business community and ensures their voices are heard in shaping the future of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, this concludes our program. I want to thank each of you for coming today.
Final comments?
Do we have time for final comments, Ben, or we're already past on maybe a minute? Okay. I think we're back to Ms. Maclnty, if you want to start.
Thank you, everyone, for taking my time out of the schedule to come this morning. I didn't, you probably could have been anywhere else, but you chose to be here, listen to us. Thank you so much for putting this on for us. Thank all of your moderators. Thank my colleagues who showed up. I think you guys have seen saturation right now. You've seen the papers, you've seen the Los Alamos playtime. Just thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks for tuning in around. I guess it's a work for me, too. If anyone is interested in learning more, you can go to my website, renneke.com, and see the whole twenty-one questions about it. Thank you. Well, thank you, everybody, for listening. It was great to interact with the Chamber of Commerce, and we look forward to doing this more than we should. And I want to reiterate my main point, you know, that we need to expect more out of the county government. They need to do better. And if you're not going to do that, then you're not going to accomplish anything in our government. Thank you.
I have considered running three times before. The time, timing was just never right for me and my family, but it is right now. I bring my experience representing the business community and working with the people of Los Alamos. We need to focus on redeveloping our downtowns and make sure our small business workers and public servants can afford to live here. We need to focus on sustainability and make sure that the quality of life in Los Alamos continues to be great. Please visit RIN for Council for more information and review my schedule of when you can join me for Coffee with a Candidate. I'm here to listen and then represent you when making educated decisions to keep Los Alamos a strong community and a great place to live. Make sure your voice is heard. Early voting is open. Get in there and vote preferably for me. A vote for me is a vote for the small business community. Thank you.
Councilwoman Derry? I'm a forty-two-year resident of the county and retiring from Los Alamos National Laboratory. After twenty years of employment, I hope to continue to apply my personal experience raising a family in the county and my professional experience as chief of staff to senior management of the laboratory, to serving on the council. I hope to continue, be able to continue to help the county plan for growth and embrace the future while preserving the past and the amenities that make the county a great place to live. Three key issues face the county: housing development, downtown revitalization, and community services. I welcome input from residents and business owners in the county on how to best address these and other issues. My name is Denise Durfus. I look forward to continuing just to represent the people of Los Alamos County, and I can only ask for your vote in the upcoming election. Thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of the Los Alamos Chamber of Commerce, thank you all for coming, and have a great rest of your day.